To the Zoom, I want to remind you about Vote 411 is now available. Vote 411 can provide you with information about the candidates you will be voting for, and has a printout feature so you can print out your choices and take it with you to the polls. And now for tonight's forum. Good evening, I'm Anitra Steele, Chair of the Forums Committee. Welcome to our forum for the North Kansas City Board of Education. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platte Counties, and co-sponsored by the North Kansas City PTA Council and Alpha Kappa Alpha Advocate for Social Justice Initiative of Chapters Beta Omega and Chi Tau Omega. This forum will be recorded and available on the League's website, l w v k c dot org, and on YouTube. The League of Women Voters is a trusted grassroots, nonpartisan organization whose members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we neither endorse or oppose candidates or political parties, we are directly involved with the sharing the important issues. Our mission is to empower voters and defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like you to know the other League members volunteering with me tonight. Cindy Schmidt is the timekeeper, and our Zoom is monitored by Laura Mountjoy. The public has sent in the questions via the League's website, l w v k c dot org. Tonight, we welcome our moderator, League member Elizabeth Dar.
Thank you, Anitra. I'm delighted to join you for tonight's forum for the North Kansas City Board of Education. The Board of Education provides governance for the district as its top elected officials. The Superintendent of Schools reports directly to the Board. Six residents have declared their candidacy. In the April 8th election, two candidates will be elected to the two open seats, both for a three-year term. Our forum tonight will last approximately ninety minutes. I'll ask each candidate the same question selected from those submitted by the public. The order of candidate responses has been determined by a random rotation. Each candidate will be given ninety seconds to respond to the question and two minutes for a closing statement. All of the candidates running for the Board of Education have been invited, and we're gratified that all six candidates are with us this evening. Welcome to all of you. Candidates, we ask you to answer the question asked and stick to the topic. There will be no rebuttals, but you may go back to an issue during your two-minute closing remarks. Let's get started. First question. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you want to serve on the North Kansas City Board of Education, and what qualifies you to serve. We're going to start with Dan Mortick.
All right, thank you very much for the question, and thank you for the invitation to be part of this forum. I made a very conscious decision to get into education as a career change. I grew up in the North Kansas City School District, made a choice to live there, to raise a family, and my kids all went to the North Kansas City School District. I think the reason I decided to run for Board again was the fact that I still think I have a lot to offer to the Board. I was a administrator in the district for nineteen years. I currently serve on the Ed Foundation Board, but most importantly, I really treasure the work that I did at the high school and also my experience on the Board. So I think the main reason I wanted to do that is I think North Kansas City School District is a great district. It should be the district of choice for all families. And my mission and my vision is to continue looking at that and making sure that I do everything in my power, and as a Board Member, everything that is structured that way to make sure that we remain a viable place for all students, no matter who they are. And the school I worked at welcomed all kids, and make sure that I can still contribute to what is the future for my six grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's hear from Erin Peters.
Hi, great, thank you. Again, thank you for hosting us this evening as well. So, you know, similar to what Dan just said, one of the reasons why it's so important to me and I'm so excited to run for the school board is also my background is in education as well. I actually started in education and then have since moved to other things in my career and my profession. But education is one of those things that has just always stayed a passion for me. I was a building teacher or a classroom teacher for ten years, and then I was a university professor for a couple of years, and I've worked in online. I've got three kids in the district right now as well, which is another thing that makes it even more important to me to really be active in what's going on in the school district. So I've got a child at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level. My husband's also an educator as well. So it's just kind of a cornerstone of who we are. And as Dan also said, you know, this district is an amazing district, and we're doing a lot of things right. And I just want to be there to continue to support the things that we're doing, to continue with the, you know, the inclusivity and the culture changes that we're having around here, and just be there to help guide us to the next, to the next level, because that's what our kids deserve. They deserve the best, so thank you.
Thank you. Now we want to hear from Roy Copeland.
Well, first, thank you so much. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, as well as the PTA, and as well as the Ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. For you all, having an opportunity for all of us to get a chance to say hello and tell you all about why it's important, and then for us running, and also too, just for you all to get a chance to learn more about us. I'm a father of two wonderful children and also to a husband. And then I'm also a small business owner here in Gladstone. I own my own State Farm Agency. I have a third grader as well as a high school freshman. I'm running because it's as simple as this. I believe in public education. I'm the son of two former educators. And then also too, I believe in all students. What's really exciting about what we're doing in North Kansas City is we have an opportunity to meet the moment of a lot of different types of students, whether they be race, gender, or even mental state. And that's an exciting opportunity to continue to keep doing some of the things that we're doing right, but then also to meet the moment of how can we continue to keep doing better. I want to make sure that we are meeting that moment and being supportive of the administration, but then also bringing my diverse background of being a small business owner, being someone that's really involved in the Northland community, a lifelong Kansas Cityian, and then also too, the experience of having educators as a parent. And then also, my spouse is educator as well, too. I want to bring all those things in so we can continue to keep moving the district forward. And then also, lastly, making sure that we're meeting the needs of every student that comes to our doorstep. I'm Roy Copeland, and I, again, am just grateful for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Now we'll hear from Jessica Rezak.
Hi, I'm Jessica Rezak, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to participate in the forum. I am a parent of a Crestview Elementary student, and I'm also the treasurer of our PTA. Professionally, my background is in software engineering, but I've also worked in museums where I've worked alongside teachers to develop educational programming to meet state standards and give students a break from the classroom that they were usually grateful for. I've also worked at a private school. I was there during COVID, and I really got to see the disruption that COVID caused for students' learning. My family and I were drawn to North Kansas City schools because of the diversity of the district and the way that the district has embraced that diversity and supported families from lots of different backgrounds. I'm running for school board because I believe that all students in the district deserve access to the best education that we can provide. I particularly became concerned when the district ended the extended calendar at Crestview and Wynwood. I'm not necessarily in favor of continuing the extended calendar, but I thought that the way that the school board and the district addressed that really made it a bumpy change. And then looking at some of the data around how the Title I schools in the district have performed over the last ten or so years, I'm really concerned about making sure that they're supported and ensuring that teacher, students, and family voices are genuinely heard in district decisions.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Mason.
Thank you for allowing me to participate and to be here tonight. I am a retired teacher from the North Kansas City School District. I started my teaching career in nineteen eighty-six in preschool. I volunteered so much at my daughter's preschool that they asked me to take the Montessori training. And the next thing I knew, I was there for about ten years. I found myself gravitating more and more toward older kids, so I lived my life backwards. I went back to college as an adult, and my oldest daughter graduated from high school the same year. I got my undergraduate degree. In nineteen ninety-nine, I found a home in North Kansas City schools, and it was one of the best decisions I ever made. Excuse me. I did retire in twenty twenty-two, but I still am with the district. I sub, and also I helped the testing of ELL students, which I would have to give up that position should I be elected. I strongly, strongly believe in the importance of public education. I see so many, so many wonderful things going on in our school, and I want to make sure that quality of education continues. I also, I'm a good listener. I believe that working together with teachers, parents, the community.
Thank you, thank you. Your time has expired, Carolyn. We have time for other questions. Okay, and let's hear from Jason Russell.
All right, well, that's hard to follow. First, no matter who gets picked for this, everybody here is great and qualified, and it's really neat to see that no matter who wins, it's going to be a good deal. That being said, Jason Russell, currently the VP of Staley for the PTA, then on various boards and whatnot, coached throughout the Northland for twenty years. I have a special needs daughter and two sons, and they're all, you know, been in the district. And that is the primary reason that I want to run and do something or be the voice for the special needs that I don't believe that is currently, that's currently out there, not loud enough anyway. There's a lot of things that can be done with that, and that's my primary, I guess, objective is to, again, be the voice for all those that don't really have a voice currently. If not as qualified.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Jason. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Excuse me. Since you decided to run, what sources have you used to educate yourself about the needs of MKC students and schools? And we'll start this time with Erin.
Well, I think one thing that's really important is just, you know, getting yourself out there and meeting and talking to as many different people as you can. So one thing that I have done is, of course, you know, attending board meetings when I can to find out what is on, you know, the agenda, what's happening in the district right now, having relationships. My husband worked in the district for a while, and I was born and raised here in North Kansas City and, or North Kansas City Schools, graduated from North Kansas City Schools. And so through that, I have a lot of connections and know a lot of people throughout the community, as well as throughout the district, that I'm constantly, you know, discussing matters. You know, like, as I said, that my husband, you know, is also, he's at Park Hill Schools, but, you know, they're still, we're all kind of the Northland, you know, working with some of the same, some of the same issues. So having lots of just discussions with friends and my husband and making sure that we're going. You know, I'm also involved in the PTA at Newmark and several other PTAs, the district PTA. And, you know, just making sure that we're constantly staying involved and listening and hearing the things that are going on, as well as I'm also part of the Education Committee for the Northland Chamber, and just going and hearing some of the things that are going on globally at the legislative level as well, of things that are going to be up and coming that we really need to have as future Board Members need to have, you know, in our periphery so that we're ready to take on some of those challenges that will be hitting us head-on soon.
Thank you. Jason, what sources have you turned to?
Really mostly the board meetings, also joining some of the, oh, the, like, the bond committee and whatnot. But other than that, I've already been in it with the coaching and the PTA groups. I also, a couple of years ago, was with the Newmark PTA, and now doing the Staley one. The stay really integrated into everything that I can in that way. Kind of following people around and annoying them, if that makes sense. I'm asking a lot of questions because I don't have a whole lot of experience, and I'm wanting to kind of take it all in. Other than that, reading up and watching video after video after video, because oddly enough, they're all on the website, which is neat. And so I think I probably logged a good twenty-four hours of watching videos so that I can kind of catch up to some of these people that are running.
Thank you very much. Roy, what sources have you turned to?
This time, running, I wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to talk to as many teachers and staff members, as well as administrators that I possibly could. So the first thing was talking to teachers, not only at the elementary level, but also the middle school level, and then at the high school level, so I can get a variety of really what's going on. The next thing was talking to bus drivers, custodians, lunch staff members, just anyone that would have an opportunity just to give me what's, give me actually just some advice on, or just a listing ear on what's going on in the district from their perspective. I also got an opportunity to meet with the city council members from Gladstone, as well as the city council members from Kansas City, and three state representatives about what's going on at the state level, and also two state senators as well, too, because I wanted to see how wide-ranging that everything was and to get those views, because we do have to use our connections with everyone and make sure that we're getting appropriate information from all sources.
Thank you. Dan, how about you?
Similar to some of the comments we've heard, I think we do a lot of listening as a group running for Board. I have, of course, with my, the job I used to have as a high school principal, still a lot of connections in the district with teachers and listening to their voices along with staff members. Also privileged to be on the Ed Foundation Board and really get an insight into the the needs that are, that are part of what we do on the Board and look at that, also with celebrating student successes, what the students are doing, and also what the teachers, the innovation the teachers are coming up with. Another thing I've really focused on is really paying a lot of attention to what's happening in Jefferson City, the legislative movements, and seeing what bills are being passed and kind of thinking through what that impact would be on the district. I think it's kind of an uncertain landscape that we're in, and so I've been trying to put a lot of focus on, on listening to what our legislations are saying and also reading some of those, the bills that are pending in the House and Senate. Also, kind of similar to what Jason was saying, watching a lot of videos for the board meetings. I haven't been able to go to very many of them, but it's really nice that we can view them and watch them when we have the time in our schedule. So I think what everybody's saying, it's a lot of listening and asking questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess, what about you?
Yeah, similar to everybody else, I've been paying attention to what's going on with the school board. And speaking to current school board members, there's a couple of opportunities that North Kansas City Schools has had for getting to talk to some of the administrators at the district level, too. And then, of course, listening to families, teachers, and students about their experience in North Kansas City Schools right now. I also think that it's really, maybe more so than in years past, it's vitally important that all of the school board members are paying attention to what's happening at both the state and the federal level. I think that public governmental support for education has changed radically just in the last two weeks, let alone the last two months and the last two years. So I really think it's important for school board members to have a sense of what's going on there and in what ways we can be proactive to make sure that North Kansas City Schools is going to be able to maintain its footing in this landscape.
Thank you. Carolyn, what research have you been doing?
One of the things that was really helpful was when the Board invited the candidates to come, and they explained what all their jobs were. I don't remember everything, but that, that was kind of eye-opening for me. Also, like I said, I'm still subbing, being in the school, seeing all the wonderful work that's being done. And then also, I have the opportunity to ask teachers questions. What do you need? That sort of thing, and also interacting with the rest of, you know, the staff at a multiple of schools, not just one. Also, when we're talking about the legislature in Jefferson City, I was able to participate in Capitol Action Day with the NEA, and I had, it was, I did not know that existed. It was one of the best experiences I ever had. I got to actually meet and have about a thirty-minute conversation with five different representatives. And I'm going to continue to do that just because I feel like if you, if you know what's going on and you know people, your voice will be more apt to be heard. And again, I'm a strong advocate for public education.
Thank you. North Kansas City is the largest school district in the area with over twenty thousand students. Demographic projections show fairly flat growth in the district enrollment over the next ten years. Do you believe new construction should be de-emphasized in order? I'm sorry. Do you believe new construction should be de-emphasized in favor of other uses of the district's resources? And do you favor the one hundred seventy-five million dollar bond issue, which will also be on the ballot? This time, we'll start with Jessica.
So first to say, I do support the bond issue that will be on the ballot. I mean, I think specifically at the school board level, preparing for the building needs of the district is one of the more important roles that the school board, school board serves for the district. I think in terms of, one of the aspects that the school board is trying to account for and the district is trying to account for is ensuring that there is enough space for the number of students. But being a parent of a child at Crestview where they're in a brand-new building, I also see the ways that new buildings bring, in this case, literal sunlight into the classrooms. It also supports a much safer environment for children. There's just security features in the new building that weren't in past buildings. And then also comfort issues, whether it's the arrangement of the bathrooms in the building or different setups that promote teacher collaboration and students being able to work together or experience an innovation lab that they didn't have before. There's a lot to new construction outside of just having room, physical room for the students that are in the building. So I definitely support that, and I definitely, as a school board member, would want to make sure that all of those contracts are awarded fairly.
Thank you. Carolyn?
I definitely support the bond issue. And when I, when I started in the district, I mean, we had very nice schools, but, I mean, they were built like in the fifties. And what they have done over the last couple of years has been amazing. It is such a pleasure to go in and see all the different flex rooms and all the, all the different ways you can, you can, all the different facilities and the ways they're being used to educate our kids. I think that was a brilliant move on the side of the Board. As far as like flat growth or whatever, I think we, you know, right now, we're taking care of the population that we have, and we'll just have to monitor and adjust depending on what happens in the future. We can predict, plan for it, but we never know what's going to actually happen until it happens.
Thank you. Jason, how about you?
Yes, I definitely support the bond issue. I think it is, for lack of a better word, awesome. I think that it's going to do a whole lot to get the proof. Yeah, in every way, I'm all for it. As for the construction, I'm all for that, too. There's schools like Oakwood Manor that needed upgrades and whatnot for quite a long time. Personally spoke with literally hundreds of, not only students, but their parents and everything else. And it's such a vast difference from speaking to students and parents that are at a school that's new or newer, opposed to one that's far from it. Just the energy is different. And so I just think it would be awesome for all the students in the district, and I think that they will after this bill, to be able to be excited to go to school, have those new, nice things. I mean, it's a lot to a kid. I think the superintendent said a neat thing, a story about it, and one of the kids said, I go to one of the rich schools now, and it's because they have been redone and built. So I think that that's gonna, gonna help. Yeah, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Dan?
It sounds like we're reaching consensus on, I also support the bond fully, a hundred percent. I think what the district's done really well is when it said new construction, my mind went to building new buildings. What I think the district does a really good job at is more reinvesting in the buildings that exist in our neighborhoods. I was lucky enough to be in North Kansas City High School, and we did the big renovation there. And to the point of it became much more of a functional building, better instructional space. But on another side of it, there's a certain pride that students have in a building when it's done, and you can feel that. So I applaud the district for looking at neighborhoods and putting money back in the neighborhoods. And we've done a lot of good work on that in our district and making sure that construction is where the kids are, and it really helps our neighborhoods a lot. I think the other thing on the, on the bond, as far as supporting it, the other thing the district's done a really good job at, it's a no-tax increase. So not having to look at a tax increase to support our facility and the long-range planning on those facilities, I think is a big plus and should be a real drawing card for families to our district. They've been able to maintain that.
Thank you. Erin, how do you feel?
Yes, I also agree, one hundred percent support, support the bond issue coming up. And, you know, one thing that, that I think is really important and that I've loved in the, in the process as they've, you know, made the decision on how they're going to move forward on the building, kind of the, the tagline is every student, every stage. So all of the students are going to benefit, you know, no matter which feeder, you know, which of the four feeder patterns that they, you know, roll up to with the different high schools. And, and as other people have mentioned, you know, again, updating these buildings for, you know, the safety, safety and security pieces for, you know, making it light and bright in a place that kids want to go to school in. And, you know, we, the learning environment is important, and, you know, being able to go in, you know, my daughter goes to Newmark, and there's no windows there really, and she's always like, oh, I never know what's going on. It's dark and dreary. But, you know, Newmark is going to get a nice, a nice bright facelift. Same thing, some of us were at Oakwood Manor, and seeing the things that they're going to change to this school that's been there, you know, just brightening it up. It's going to look like a forest when the kids go in. Again, just the pride that they can find. And to Dan's point as well, you know, bringing that into our, our neighborhoods and our communities and doing this for our schools only uplifts our, the entire groups of neighborhoods and the entire community in the North Kansas City School District, something that they can be really proud of, that will continue bringing people to our community.
Thank you. Roy, last but not least.
Thank you so much. So I serve on the Parent, a Montessori Committee, our Parent Committee for the Bond. So like everyone else has said, I am a hundred and forty percent in favor of the bond situation. Now, talking about the second part of the question with new construction, there does have to be a balance. And what I've been proud about, and Jessica talked about this as well, too, about Crestview being a new school in a neighborhood, that then we reinvested back into that neighborhood of building a brand-new school. My daughter attends Davidson, so that was another neighborhood that was an older, established neighborhood that a new school was built in. Dan talked about North Kansas City High School, which my daughter attends now, that was still basically a new high school, but still with that old high school traditional feel. We have to continue to keep making sure that our students have the best when it comes to facilities, and understanding as well, too, that they learn different than we did. So the buildings that were built even back in the seventies and eighties may not fit the need of the new, of our students right now, and continuing to just continue to keep moving forward, not only with facilities, but just making sure that we're investing in the communities, in all of our communities. And the last thing that I'll say about the bond situation is each student deserves to have a state-of-the-art facility, no matter what school they go to in the district.
Thank you. Next question is, what types of support should be given to those schools with lagging academic performance? And this time we'll start with Jason.
And it was with lacking academic. I'm trying to think of any that would have lacking. I don't know. I think that starts at home. The parents and everything working with their kids. And then of course at school, that the teachers are equipped with everything that they need to be equipped with. Whether that be iPads or laptops or whatever the case may be. But I don't know of any schools that are, that are lacking. I think that we're pretty much correct. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'm not a teacher. I think that we're doing pretty well with that already.
I, I'm in it. You've still got a minute. You said you had a special needs child. Maybe you'd like to talk a little bit about the support you'd like for that child to have.
That, yeah, I mean, I could go under days on that. Everything from playgrounds, a safe place to play. There's so many new things that you have for autism that's not incorporated into the schools yet. Those kids don't get to take part in sports really. I mean, there's Special Olympics that's very limited. It's not really introduced to the schools at all. I'd like to see that introduced. Think that taking part in sports is education all in itself. I mean, it's not in the book. It's not something that's, that's learned by seven that'd be good for everybody. Honestly, I think the winning, losing, the being outside is a big part.
Thank you very much. Roy, what should, what should, support should be given for lagging academic performance schools?
I think that we have to get away from there, that every school has to have exactly the same situation. So we have to look at going back and adjusting for each school and whatever that need is for that school. So working with that building administrator, working with the teachers to make sure, number one, they have enough pairs, they have enough resource specialists as well too. Whatever the need is that we can provide to get academic levels to where they need to be. Making sure that we're actually individualizing each school to make sure that we are meeting those needs. Sometimes the one size fits all approach works, but in something like this, that is something that we do need to look through and make sure that we're meeting those needs. And whether that be listening to what the teachers have, whether it be listening to the building administrators by either having more assistant principals. That's where I have to listen and rely on the administration to help through that. But being supportive of understanding that we need to give those buildings, whatever the resources they need to make them succeed.
Thank you. Carolyn, what would you do?
Well, we, we have a lot of support set up already in schools. We have reading support. We have ELL services. We have people in buildings that will pull kids in small groups to do tutoring based on what they need. Social emotional support is also important, like I've seen cooldown rooms or like the soothing, the fidget boxes, math support. And kudos to our teachers that will, you know, verbalize, I need this. Or like the collaborative planning time, you know, can you help me? I'm struggling here. And then administrators, the administrators that I have worked with have been fabulous in, you know, coming to the board or going to whomever principals go to, to make sure or to try to make sure that those teachers have the resources that they need. And trusting teachers to know what kind of supports they need and piggybacking off of what Roy said. One size doesn't fit all because your school population, I mean, your kids change every year. And hopefully sometimes that kid that's been in reading support for two years, oh my goodness, by third grade, they don't need it anymore. You know, it may be another need. So you just have to kind of listen to what's going on in the building and monitor and adjust from there.
Thank you very much. Erin, what would you suggest?
Well, yeah, to just kind of flow right off of what Carolyn was just saying, that is one thing that's really important is just to know that education and what's happening in the building is an ever-changing system. So yes, there's always going to be things and you've always just got to stay on top of the information. And, you know, as a school board member, you know, get in the buildings, talk to the teachers, as we mentioned before. And not just the teachers, all of the staff. And, you know, we, when we've kind of mentioned before that we need to be really, really good listeners to understand and fully understand. Sometimes we think we know what they need, but we've actually got to listen so that we understand. I think one of the bigger things too, one, one thing that would be really important is to just start figuring out with the why. You know, let's take a look at the data. Are we looking at test scores? Are we looking at attend, you know, attendance data? Are we looking at behavioral interventions, data, things like that? You know, what's, what's going on? What's the issue? And then what resources, you know, once we kind of identify where we feel like some of the gaps are, what are some of the resources that we need to, to put there? And then also, you know, looking at the budget and making sure can we figure out how we can make that happen as, you know, things are ever changing and needs are coming up, you know, maybe mid-year. You know, moving those around resources, what, do we need math resources? Do we need more, do we need more reading resources? Things like that in different schools, because as was mentioned before, maybe we're having a reading struggle over here. But maybe over here, it's really a math struggle. So again, just staying on top of all that information at all times.
Thank you very much. Jessica, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think first what we need to understand is the specific challenges that each school faces. As many of the other candidates have said, that varies from building to building. Sometimes it's teacher turnover, sometimes it's language barriers, sometimes it's resource gaps. And each school that's struggling is going to, is facing unique circumstances that will require tailored solutions rather than one size fits all approaches. I think that the best way to address these challenges is by listening to teachers and building administrators. They know what the needs of their students are. They know where a specific behavior interventionist or a reading interventionist is going to really be able to power what students need. And they have ideas for different programs. I think the way that teachers are going to thrive and our schools are going to thrive is when they know that they're empowered to have a good idea, try it out and then share it with their peers in their school building. And then share that with the district when good ideas are working. I think we've seen that work in lots of different ways. And one of that, one of the aspects of North Kansas City schools that I think we should all be proud of is that its size lets us, lets it really serve as a model and a potential innovator for other schools in the state. So I would like to see the school board and administration supporting those efforts a lot more and just making sure that teachers have the freedom to be effective.
Thank you very much. Dan, what are your ideas?
When you stated the question, you said lacking academic performance. So I think part of the, the answer to this question is what is it that we're measuring? What's the purpose of the measurement? And then trying to find as many of people have said tonight, then, then what are the metrics we're trying to hit? And, and then actually the why. I think we'd have to look at curriculum, we'd have to look at test scores, we'd have to look at environment. We'd have to look at all those things go into it. But most importantly, you look at the qualitative data and try and figure out what it's telling you, but also look at the quantitative data, which is obviously teacher voice, student voice. Trying to really put that into what would be a comprehensive plan to, to help the school. I think a real key to this question and, and an answer is, and Jessica alluded to this too. Teachers have to be part of the solution. And if you don't give the teacher's voice in a solution, from my years of working as administrator, it's not impossible to get to the solution, but it sure slows the solution down if teachers don't have a voice in this. So once you do discover what it is you're working toward and have it defined and, and everybody can articulate what it is, then we have an amazing team of support in our district that Carolyn mentioned, so many of them that you could call to help resolve that perceived performance.
Thank you. And our next question is, currently, the federal Department of Education is being downsized and may be eliminated. What effect would that have on North Kansas City schools? Jessica, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my first worries as a parent are that it'll have effect on the funding that's available to the schools. It's also going to make it a lot harder to have and share data amongst schools to really have a good picture of what's going on. The, because of the decision to gut the Department of Education, the federal government is losing a lot of really smart people that are able to design and encourage policy and support schools. I'm also really concerned about school lunch and the impact of changes at the federal level to that. I think one of the most important things that we can do for students, especially younger students, is giving them more opportunities to physically move during the day and giving them food that supports their brain's ability to learn and their body's ability to be still while in the classroom. I think a year ago, school lunch was almost an impossible challenge and it's getting so much worse with the current federal policy decisions. So I would say those are two of the issues that I'm really concerned about.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Did you want to finish?
Oh, no, I just saw I had twenty more seconds. And I thought I would add that, you know, I'm really concerned about those pieces. But it's also going to be really hard to meet the needs of a diverse school outside of the Department of Education with a lot of the other policy decisions that are being made and enforced.
Thank you. Our poor timer is really being stressed out. Thank you Cindy. Carolyn, what are your ideas about the program of educational?
Well, I, I am definitely very concerned about the Department of Education being dismantled. And I know that they, that the funding that they provide really helps us educate our, our children with IEPs. And I, I mean, I, I worry about, about having enough money to fund that. Because it's a lot more expensive. I, I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, but I think we have to prepare for it. And it definitely, definitely is a concern. That's really all I have.
Thank you very much. Dan, what about you?
Well, like, I think we, we're all kind of talking about something. We don't necessarily know the impact yet because it's, there's just a lot of unanswered questions. I think to one point is, the impact we do know is with all the people that have been let go, fired. There's going to be a human, the capacity to help kids, it's just a natural consequence of not enough people to, to help the programs. So the Department of Education has been known for. Grants, big question on grants. And I think we don't know the impact on the district until we see what programs are supported by grants. And then how can we still support that with resourcing our own funding? So that, that's a big concern for my, for when I think about it, funding for special programs like IDA. And those, again, that
Can you explain what IDA is?
Yeah, Individual Disabilities Education Act.
Thank you. I'm probably the only person on the screen.
No, that's fine. Well, you're good. But I think that, that also brings up the question of how are we going to support kids with a very diverse, very diverse student population. My own child had an IEP and I would worry about that. And I also think it gives an uneasiness for teachers. They just don't know what's going to happen next. And that worries me a lot. Their educators work very hard and having all this and top everything else we expect of them worries me a lot.
Thank you. Roy, what are your thoughts?
It's instability or just not being stable and throwing more chaos into this vacuum. The good thing about the, the district, to answer your question, is the majority of the funding comes from property tax dollars and also through the state. But what this starts a precedent of them doing this at the federal level, which had eventually reached down to the district level as that others have said about either grants or individual education programs. But here's the thing is that it starts this process of, do we start to empower them at the state level to make some of these same changes as well too? And do this now at a state level, which would have quicker impact on funding. So it sets a new precedent that we have not been in before. And then it may empower them to start making some of these different decisions.
Thank you. Jason?
I think that it's a bit of a worrisome time with, with all of it. But we, we really don't know what's going to happen with, I think that it going to the state is, is actually a good thing. I think that for a little while, we're all going to have to worry a little bit, but just wait it out. And I mean, as bad as that may sound, I, my daughter has an IEP. We have that. And that is a concern. I don't think it's time to start freaking out and, I don't know. I think we can put our concerns right now into other things that we can control. Then stick with that. I think that it's going to end up in the state's, state's control and we've got really good, I mean, really good back, I think that we're going to be able to handle it better than, than it was before. So I think that within a year, then everything will be smoothed out, figured out and doing well. On the school lunch thing, I, I disagree with. I think school lunches personally have been, been doing great. But I guess I'll look into that a little bit more and see if, I don't know, see if I need to study up on it again.
Thank you. Erin?
Yeah, I think, you know, a, a lot of what's been said, you know, it's not necessarily the known with this, it's the unknown. And just not really knowing what, what it means when we're going to dismantle it. You know, some of the things, you know, I have talked to, you know, different people about, you know, the funding and the budget. And, you know, as Roy mentioned, you know, most of the funding for the district right now comes from our property taxes. And, and those of us that are paying our property taxes know that that's probably where a lot of the money is coming from. But, you know, with some of these federally funded programs, we are going to have to figure out at some point, you know, how we might have to fill in those gaps. So we're going to have to, you know, remain cognizant of that. Of course, the kiddos that are in, you know, some of the special ed programs and, you know, some of that, we're going to have to end that with our diverse student population. We're going to have to be, to be ready for that. So having those discussions upfront to kind of have some ideas about how we might fill in those gaps. But kind of to Jason's point too, you know, it's, it's that I always go back in my life to the circle of control. And I say, you know, you can, you know, this is everything that you can control. So you've got to focus right here. And then the next level is, you know, what can you influence but not control? And then outside of that is, you know, what is completely out of your hands? And if they decide to dismantle it, that's going to be completely out of our hands. And we are going to have to come together and really be able to work together as a board to, to make sure that we are making the right impacts and making the right decisions to keep a level playing field as best we can.
Thank you very much. Jessica? Jessica?
Sorry. Didn't I answer this question already?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was a little ahead of myself. So we have the sixth question. How should the district address concerns about screen time and digital distractions? And we'll start with Roy.
We have to listen to the teachers that are in the classrooms and also the resource specialists and the parent professionals that are working with the kids daily. I, I do think that we need to come up with a policy that will help try to mitigate this problem that we have, because it is a problem on one hand, but then also too, on the other hand, we have to embrace that technology is going to be a part of our children's life. It's a part of our life. And understand how can we meet the need with technology to make sure that we're on the forefront of moving technology forward? And then making sure that we can teach them to use technology responsibly. And also too, I would say the second portion of that, I'd say second, but third portion, making sure that we, how can we effectively work with parents as well too? To make sure that it's getting hit on all levels. But as far as in the district level, I would actually want to listen and hear, number one, what the teachers are saying and the staff members as well too. Let them come up with a plan and then making sure that, number one, it's enforceable. And it also too, that it makes sense for everyone. And then also not run away from the technology portion that we have. Well, I mean, my technology portion is that understand that we're going to have to embrace technology and we can't run away from it.
Thank you. Erin?
Yeah, you know, I really feel, you know, very similar. I think that there, it's not going away. So we are going to have to at some point nurture it and, and teach kids how to be responsible with it. I do know that there is some, you know, legislation out there talking about, you know, banning cell phones and things in the, in technology and things in the classroom. I think, but I also heard that there would be a caveat there where the school boards of the different districts would have some ability to be able to make decisions on what's actually happening in their schools based on the different diversity and, you know, or, you know, the needs that are there. So I do So I do think having those discussions with teachers, because, you know, in the in the end, the teachers and the administrators and. And those that are in the buildings are going to be the ones that are going to be tasked with enforcing all of this. So it's really easy to say one thing when you're on the board, but you know, you've really got to take into account, you know, what's actually feasible there? And what do they actually do the teachers and feel empowered to do? And also, you know, speaking with the community, speaking with the parents, you know. And kind of getting everybody really on board with how this is going to work. Because there's a lot of educators out there that are really talented at figuring out how to use the cell phones and things, you know. In the classroom as part of the, you know, part of their academics. I know when I was in the classroom, it's been a while now, but even then. We were starting to use, you know, we were back then, we were like tweeting and or we'd have, you know, like a class, you know, when you came in, you know, you'd. Do your a a little activity or whatever. And so it does, it can have a place.
Okay, thank you. Jessica?
Yeah, I think I am a software engineer is my career now. And so I definitely understand the value that technology and well-designed software can bring to the classroom. And, you know, to all of our lives. I will say I might be happier if my child did not have an iPad provided by the district than I am with her having an iPad. I feel like so much parenting right now is trying to mitigate this cultural experiment. That we've been running on all of our children for the last twenty or so years, just be putting a device in their hands and seeing what happens. That's about to get a lot more complicated with AI. I develop applications that are powered by large language models. I really deeply understand how they work. And I would be very surprised if in the term of these two new board members. We didn't see dramatic changes to what the workforce needs. So the same way that it's important that we know, you know, that we give students some access to screens in the classroom. And let them see how to be responsible digital citizens. It's also going to be really important that schools are paying attention to and able to adapt. To what AI is going to bring in terms of challenges, but also in terms of opportunity.
Thank you. Jason?
I think that it starts at home. And with that, I think that Roy touched on that one. It's maybe we need to. Educate the parents. I know that a lot of parents don't know the devices as good as their children do. And with that, some children aren't allowed to take home their devices. Like my daughter, for example, she doesn't bring hers home. My son can. And I think that that's that's a bit awkward, but some of the classes, I think that you have to have your device in. I think that. I think that it's helpful. Other classes, I don't think that it's needed. As long as it's not distracting, being used to distract. I mean, the device that they give you has all these things on it that prevent the students or are set to prevent. Them from doing stuff outside school related, you know, stuff like searching Google or the internet when you're supposed to be studying, you know, your school stuff. In the real world, we use those devices. So I think that they need to be equipped to learn how to how to use them. I don't think it needs to be their entire time at school. The device needs to be out. I think they need to be able to count change out in real life. And that's something that we've forgotten how to do. Because the computer tells you wherever you're working, how much change to throw out. And so when it comes to actually needing to know that math and counting something out, they have no idea. So I'd say for some of the classes that it's required, sure. And other ones that you don't have any, I have what we're doing now already.
Thank you. Dan?
I think without a doubt, and I get the honor of visiting a lot of schools all over the United States. This is a key issue in so many of our schools. It is a distraction. But similar to what a lot of us are saying, there has to be a balance. You can't run away from technology. I will age myself a little bit when we all sitting in front of the computer and we had to figure out exactly what that meant when kids got laptops delivered to them. And what that did for the teaching and how to make that not a distraction. I also appreciate the comment from Jessica about AI, what a struggle that is to find out especially in a secondary situation. Is that their own work turned in is AI helping them? Is it AI generate? It's just, it is a lot. And I think the the board will continue to have to to work through that as to how they how they approach that. The other point I always think about this in, and I speak from my own experience, there's also that balance. I think Roy was mentioning this, that. Families want to find their kids and are used to finding their kids pretty instantaneously if there's an emergency. Or something's going on at school. I unfortunately had to go through that when I was a principal in North Town, when we'd have a lockdown or something like, something like that. That would, you want to find your child. I wanted to find my child. They're in the same building. So I think we've got to be aware of that balance of how to keep our families in the loop. And what does that look like? We've still got to struggle with that a little bit.
Unfortunately. Carolyn?
A hard question to go last on. I do think, I do definitely think it's all about balance. And when we first got our iPads and so forth, I mean. Teachers have done a really good job trying to balance that sometimes after they do, and I'm speaking elementary. When they do, they'll model a lesson or something and then have their independent practice on the iPad, which is great. But that's, I mean, but there's a lot of other, but I also see a lot of other hands-on manipulative stuff. Used in the classrooms too. So it's definitely about balance. And I know personal experience, if I am on a screen for too long, it puts me in a foul mood and that's as an adult. So I I'm sure that from watching grandkids, I have seen that too. And it's like, you guys need to go outside for a bit. So anyway, but it is here and it'll be. I I have been blown away by the advances in AI. And it'll be interesting. I think it's going to be something that we're, as soon as we figure out how. You know, the kids use it. I think it's going to be an invaluable resource. So anyway. Yeah, balance.
Balance.
Yeah.
So our next question is this. What is your stance on funding for arts, music and sports programs? And this time we'll start with Erin.
Oh, I'm very much for you funding for all of those programs, you know, as we've spoken about before, we have a very diverse group. Of students and, you know, making sure that we're funding, you know, not only the the sports, you know, that seems is usually the ones that we. We think of first and gets a lot of the limelight, but also the arts as well. And I, one thing that I think is really great is that as part of this, you know, the the bond that's coming up. Two of our high schools, Oak Park and Winnetonka will be, one of the very first things they'll do is is upgrade their performing arts centers. Which is fantastic because we've got a lot of talent with these kids and they don't have the space right now to be able to do. And I think I was an Oak Park mom that was speaking recently that, you know, their their band actually has to take turns practicing because the space isn't big enough. And, you know, what a great problem to have that you have so many kids that want to be involved in these things. And now being able to, once we get this bond passed, being able to get those kids those spaces. So I think that it's really important that we keep, just like we're talking about, you know, so many kids heads are stuck in technology. Or, you know, in front of a a gaming station all day. Let's put some money and put some, you know, oomph behind some of these other programs to get these kids excited about that. Get them out, running around and having different experiences. Because they'll have lifelong experiences doing those things, going on band trips or, you know, working in the theater. And that will serve them for a lifetime.
Thank you. Roy?
Thank you so much for that. I was, I played sports all through high school, but one of the fun things that I talk about is that I was also in the band. As well as one of our senior requirements was in high school was we had to perform a senior play. And if it wasn't for that play, I probably would have never performed a play whatsoever. And it was actually a great experience. We're going back on saying that is, the district is doing a great job about making an investment, number one, into the high schools, getting performing arts centers. Brand new performing arts centers, what Erin mentioned as far as in Winnetonka and Oak Park. What's really awesome is that the existing performing arts centers at those schools are going to be transformed to additional choir space, additional band space. That's when we're talking about meeting the needs of all our students. Yes, sports are important just as well too. But then also making sure that how do we meet the needs of a very ever-changing student through fine arts, through art, through. Either concert band, singing, performing, visual arts, whatever that may be, providing those avenues. So we can best meet the needs of our students and also our ever-changing students, so we can set them up for success. But I am a huge proponent of making sure that we have the correct funding for that.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Um, I'm very much in favor of funding for arts programs and sports. And I I'm at home and I'm sitting at my desk and I had a parent of a special needs student give this to me a long time ago. It's an Albert Einstein quote, and it says, everyone is a genius. But if you judge a fish on its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life thinking it's stupid. Anyway, and I, that was years ago and I've hung on to it because it it, I love it. Anyway, art, sports and other things are another way that maybe a kid that isn't as academically inclined. Can can succeed and show their stuff or have a have a way to be recognized, build self-esteem. There's nothing more exciting than a friend of mine's daughter who was painfully shy. Barely spoke all through elementary school to see her have a special part in Middle School Musical. I mean, I just to watch kids blossom and not only in, you know, performing arts, but in visual arts and sports. I mean, I think we need that, that diversity.
I like that fish story.
I do too.
Dan?
Yeah, I think the the arts and is a, it's so important for our schools. I was a huge supporter of the arts when when I worked at at the school that I had the pleasure of working at. And for the main reason I had to learn this as an administrator is that it's a way of connection. And sometimes it's the only thing that brought a student to school was looking forward to the band or or being in the musical. Or doing an art project. And that connection was so important to keep kids engaged in school. So I totally always support the arts program and and what our schools do for that. I'd also give another shout out to within the same type of area is supporting clubs. Our teachers do so much to support so many clubs. Some of them are not paid, but it's like, do you have an interest? Okay, let's do a club. Again, another, to me, it always goes back to however many connections we can make with our students, K-12. And getting involved in the buildings and doing things and and then the community so our our patrons can see what what our kids are capable of doing. Outside of the academic world, it's just a huge plus to me. So you totally support the arts and clubs. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Think that we're already doing a really good job with it. This is the bond that's coming up is is going to help a lot with the arts and everything else. I'm hoping that it will reach the smaller groups like special needs. I think it would be. I don't even have words for it. To to have a play, you know, or something like that, a special kid, you know. These kids are putting it on. I think that that would be amazing. I know my daughters love it. It would take very patient teachers to do something like that. It would probably take some extra resources and whatnot, but we've got great teachers at the district. I think that there's plenty of people that that could do something like, it would be super neat. With the sports, again, I think we're doing great. I mean, we've got scholarships, we've got, even it brings parents together. I mean, being in the PTA and the sports and all that kind of good stuff. Especially at the high school level, you've got parents helping out, which is super neat. I've met so many people and. And I've met, I don't know, a lot of new friendships and stuff that that I would have never had. And being all those, being a part of all those for the kids, they really grow up or mature anyway. A lot better than they would without something like that. So definitely something that we need to continue to support. Maybe add on to a little bit, you know, like in the middle school level. I think that we could come up with more theater type of things, maybe debate a little bit earlier. I'd be a lot better at this than I am now. So, you know, the kids are nervous right now. Maybe make them do a few of these things and they wouldn't be like me.
Thank you. And Jessica?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely agree. I'm glad that Jason said debate. I was, I was going to throw that in there. But I think a lot of what Dan said about the importance of extracurriculars in addition to arts and sports. I, they're, they're so important because I think the classroom is where students learn. Like a lot of the learning that you're going to use in the rest of your life comes through the classroom. A fair amount comes through clubs and arts and that kind of participation. But I think more importantly, arts and sports are really where we find our home at schools. It's where we feel like we have a family of people around us. It's where, you know, in my case, as a high school and college debater, it's where I found the other weird kids that I could hang out with. And I think that that it's so important for participation and just wanting to go to school. Or begrudgingly going to school if that is your particular situation. I also think that in North Kansas City schools, the arts and sports really serve an important role in the feeder pattern. That's one of the ways that our daughter is excited about going to North Town. We've been going to North Town football games since. She was in kindergarten or maybe even a little bit before. She sees high school students that she knows, her babysitters. You know, give her a hug when they run into her at the games. And the same with with the different arts programs here. She likes to go to musicals. She likes to know what's going on and really look forward to how she's going to fit in at the high school when she gets there.
Thank you. Our next question is sort of related. How do you plan to support clubs and organizations that promote leadership and teamwork? And we'll start with Carolyn.
Um, I think clubs are really important and it's a way for. Especially in large height or in large schools, it's a way to find community and to connect with people. I, and there's nothing more exciting than finding somebody like in a book club that, you know, can. Recommend books for you to read. You can write, and you have something, you have a common goal or a common sharing. I'm not sure what my role would be as a school board member in supporting clubs. But I mean, I would certainly be, I I mean, I don't, I think that funding clubs or providing money for clubs. Whether that's through, you know, however we would raise the funds if we didn't have enough like in our budget. Is a very important thing to do and I would be, you know, a hundred percent for that. I know that my children participated in clubs before and after school. And and actually benefited a lot from that. I mean, everything from ski club to making wreaths. So, yeah.
Thank you. Jessica?
Yeah, I've spoken a little bit about the importance of clubs. I think that one of the parts of attending the number of school board meetings that I've attended. That I really appreciated is at the very beginning when they recognize the different teachers and students that are doing exciting things across the district. A lot of times that is club members or people that have kind of niche interests. And I think it's great that the school district can recognize those students and provide support for the clubs and the programs that they're interested in. I also think that, oh, let me get my thought a little bit. Yeah, I've just really enjoyed getting to see all of the different things that students do and look forward to being able to support that as a school board member. I've also really loved at some of the Crestview events and some of the other events that I've gone to around the district, getting to meet. Some of the members of the Asian Student Union and the Black Student Union at the different high schools, North Town specifically. But it's great to see the opportunities that the school can create and that these clubs can create. For students to really be proud of who they are and what they bring to the school. And find opportunities to develop some leadership skills that maybe they didn't have before they got involved.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, this this question does kind of dovetail into talking about the opportunity for clubs. I think one of the things that we have to think about, especially for a lot of our schools, is how do you make that opportunity during the day? How do we make sure that this opportunity to be part of something, to be part of a club and organization, happens when kids are in the building? Because a lot of our kids, and again, I'll speak probably more secondary, have obligations after school. They may be taking care of a brother or sister. They may have a job. They may have to do things that prohibit them from being part of an organization. They may have to do things that prohibit them from being part of an organization that happens after school. Most of the organizations, when I was in school in North Town, was after school, but I walked to school, so it was fine. What I what I think we have to be very smart about is making sure that opportunities for kids are equal across the schools, number one. And number two, they can happen when schools can reach them and be able to be part of them. And I know the schools do a pretty good job of having shifting shifts in schedules and trying to keep that in mind. But I never want to have, I don't I don't want to be able to say, well, you can't do this because you have to ride the bus home or you have to take a job or you have to take care of a brother or sister. That, to me, is is where we have to be really smart and innovative of the opportunities that clubs present themselves to our students.
Thank you. Erin?
Yeah, I mean, the clubs are, you know, just like the previous question, are really where the kids are going to find their place, find their community, find their connection. I always go back, you know, a debate was mentioned, and I think about my own son who is in high school. And when he signed up for debate in his freshman year, I was like, oh, this is gonna be a disaster, like a child that doesn't like to talk or talk to anybody. But you know what? He ended up, excuse me, I'm getting over cold, debating varsity by the end of that and went from, you know, liking computers to thinking maybe he wanted to go to law school. So we're actually going to visit Mizzou Law School on Friday. So you just never know what the kids are gonna find. But I love, Dan used one of my favorite words in his answer, and that word was innovative. And, you know, as the the kids are coming up with different clubs and things, or teachers are, you know, saying that they will support a club, we do have to get innovative in finding the time, like he said, during the day or figuring out, like as a board member, you know, figuring out how can we have that transportation, that after-school transportation there for them so that they can get there? Or, for example, right now in the in the secondary schools, they have the win time that I know can be used for that. I know when I was at Liberty North High School, we created something called Eagle Hour, which was academic, but also a time that they could do their clubs during the day so that they had that time open in the evening. And so I think that would be a really great conversation to have is how can we be innovative to make sure that all these kids are gonna have these opportunities to get involved?
Thank you. Roy?
I think it starts from us just actually having the conversation of what we're having right now and then being able to have the conversation with the administration to figure out what type of solutions that we can address when it comes to clubs. My first thought that came back to this was funding. And what I mean by funding, just being an advocate to making sure that the clubs, if they don't have to fundraise, if there's some funding that we can provide, the suit, I mean, the teachers that are actually facilitating these clubs, if they are doing volunteer hours and seeing if we can then help with that gap. But then also listening and then just being actively engaged to say, hey, what clubs are we doing? And letting them know that, hey, we are advocates for clubs and being supportive from the board position. And then I do like what the other candidates have said as well, too. We do have to get innovative and making sure they are meeting those needs, whether it's be through transportation, whether through time at either at school or after school, but just trying to meet the needs of our individual students. But then the first thing is just us having the conversation and being advocates for a club.
Thank you. Jason?
I think that having the clubs is is an awesome thing, but I think that it needs a lot of work. And the aspect of, I personally don't know, a list of all the clubs. I've I've wanted one for a while and it's something that I would like to put together. For example, at Staley, there's all kinds of clubs that have actually got part, a partial list. Then talking with my son, I was like, have you heard of any of these? And he had heard of a few of them. But I think that there needs to be a directory, for lack of a better word, that or a part of the school website or something where you can view it. It could be at the PTA level where something goes. It's it's put together of all the different different clubs so that the students can see it, maybe at the beginning of the school year. When they enroll, they can see all the different ones, maybe allow the students to of these gloves, you know, to be there at the enrollment and have their time to talk about their clubs. I don't think that they're advertised as a bad word for it, but I don't think that many of them are very known. Adventure Club is the only one that I see all the time, and that's because even when schools close, it's still going. And that's kind of neat, but I don't know much about it other than they must seem to be a pretty tough group because they're always going to school no matter what.
They've got good marketing, huh?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. This is our last question before your two-minute closing statement. And it's a little bit long, so bear with me. While schools were previously considered sensitive locations off limits to immigration and customs enforcement, known as ICE, a policy changed by the Trump administration in early 2025 removed those restrictions, allowing ICE agents to potentially enter schools, though they haven't conducted any raids. What plans would you advise individual schools to make if ICE shows up at their door? Jessica, we'll start with you.
I think my first advice for schools, and I don't necessarily have to be on the school board for them to do this, is call me. I don't want my daughter to watch her friend's parents get taken into custody by ICE at her school. I don't want any of our children to watch that. I don't want it to happen to our children, and I don't want it to happen to our children's parents. I think one of our roles as a school board is to stand by the school board's policies. And I think that might literally mean enforcing them in this environment. So I think it's important that we stand up for what we believe and we stand up for what's best for students in North Kansas City schools. And in this case, that's going to be a difficult challenge. We're really going to have to, I think, put our bodies on the line, so to speak.
Thank you. Dan?
Just kind of following what what Jessica said, I think the the role of a school board member is this is where the partnership with the superintendent and their cabinet is critically important and also the partnership that our district has with Clay County and the different law enforcement agencies that we work with. I would never put a student in jeopardy. And part of that jeopardy is that we would not want to necessarily put them in a situation where you see something you shouldn't be seeing. So there are processes in place, there are rules to follow. But I also know from experience, because I also had some of this happen a few years ago, where I know there's plans in place for trusted adults in the building that we protect our kids. And those trusted adults are with teachers, administrators, counselors. And I trust the system in that respect and inside the system when when we've had to deal with some of this before, not to this degree. But I do know my role as a board member would be to work side by side with the district and with our partners that would help us take a situation that very is horrendous, but work through the process.
Thank you. Jason?
Think that the kids need to be able to feel safe. I think it's the number one thing. All the kids that go to school need to be able and should be able to feel safe. You can't really learn best ability if you don't feel safe. And that would mean that you don't allow people to come in and take them away. You would have to have a warrant. It's there's a time and place for everything. This is not it. Kids need to be able to concentrate on. Have to worry about it inside, just like that. To what extent we are able to do something about it or to prevent it from happening, at least during school, we should do. And I don't know exactly what we would be able to do or what the laws are with that being vice suspected. So when I don't know the differences in that, I'd like the school board hopefully to be able to stand with that if it comes down to it. We should protect children. It's PTSD, thanks to your friends taking away. That's something that we should take.
Thank you. Roy?
This is where partnerships really do matter. I had an opportunity to speak to Clay County Sheriff Will Aiken about this issue when the policy was first changed and what the partnership that he has set up currently with the district right now, since they do provide a lot of deputies in schools, is that ICE actually has a great relationship with the Clay County Sheriff's Department that they've made the commitment, they won't come into any of North Kansas City schools. Now, with that being said, there there can always be some things that may happen. But the whole thing is that just that partnership along and being able to work through the community, making sure that we have that partnership in place so that we can provide the security and also to the stability for our students and making sure that they are truly protected. If there is something that's happening within the schools, the good thing is that we do have the security and also, too, the deputies in place to make sure the schools are safe. But as far as in the ICE situation, that won't happen because of the partnership that the district has set up in place with the Clay County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. Carolyn?
I was, I'm really impressed with what North Kansas City had set up when that did change. I was having a casual conversation with my neighbor whose daughter attends North Kansas City High School. And and she said, well, the district sent out a letter and and just reassured families of the policies that were in place. Don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but absolutely, we need to have those partnerships. But I had her forward me the letter and I read through it and I said, wow, this, you know, and this was like, it seemed like moments after this, you know, had happened. So North, it, the people that are currently on the board seem to be on top of things and have done a really good job, especially reassuring families of the safety of their children. And I would be committed to making sure that type of communication and those type of safety things were were still continuing on.
Thank you. Erin?
Yeah, you know, when I when I think of this, the number one thing that comes to mind, of course, is, you know, the number one goal is always going to be the safety of the kids first, you know, always the kids first and what do we have to do? And then some of the other words and things that come to mind in this situation are, as we've already mentioned, those partnerships that we have, the partnerships that we have as board members together with the superintendent, with the cabinet, different leaderships and administration, plus the partnerships that we also have in the community with the Clay County sheriffs and then their relationships and partnerships that they have beyond that. Really just making sure that we are, you know, circling up and communicating. That's another one of my favorite words, is just making sure that we have open communication on these things and we really understand, okay, you know, if this happens, you know, this is kind of the plan or, you know, ICE says that they're not gonna come into the schools. But what if, you know, somebody goes rogue and something does happen? And so then on the other side, you know, just really, you know, understanding those policies and as a board and as, you know, district leadership, being very diligent to promote those policies and uphold those policies. And again, just partnerships, leaderships, communication and diligence and just staying on top of it, I think, kind of sums it all up.
Thank you. Well, we've come to the end of our time. I want to thank all of you for coming in tonight. Now we have two minutes for each of you to make a closing statement. And going by a random rotation, we'll start with Roy.
Well, first, let me thank the League of Women Voters again and the PTA as well as the Ladies of Alpha Chi Alpha for putting on this forum and having an opportunity for all the candidates to get a chance to speak about these issues. And I want to also to thank all the candidates as well, too, for showing up to this forum as well, too. And I applaud you all for putting your name in the ring to run. Talking about me with this, I go back to that it's just important to have a seat at the table because those seats matter. I go back to when I was a kid in the second grade in the Kansas City Missouri School District and we had the landmark decision about the desegregation case and they started magnet schools. That was the first time that I was bused out of my neighborhood school to an adjacent neighborhood to go to an elementary school. Those seats and the seats that we're running for do matter because we make important decisions that have an effect on a lot of people's lives. So I ask that right now, that I am a huge believer in public education. And I believe that the diversity that we all have in the backgrounds that we have make a difference when we're sitting here debating and having discussions about policies that are gonna affect our children generations and generations to come. I'm a proud small business owner here in North Kansas City, as well as a resident of North Kansas City Schools, with having a daughter that's in third grade and a daughter that's in, I mean, I'm sorry, that's in high school. Last thing that I'll say on this is that two of my employees here at my State Farm Agency graduates, one a graduate of Staley and the other a graduate of North Town. It is so important that we invest back in to our children because they are truly gonna be our future. So with that being said, I ask for you all to vote for Roy Copeland III for school board on April the 8th. And again, thank you for having me here to be able to just have an opportunity to tell you what I mean. Thank you again.
Thank you for being here. Erin?
Great. Well, yes, again, thank you. These are always actually fun to to get to be with all of the other candidates and and talk through some of these things and honestly learn from each other. So I really appreciate that and get different, getting different ideas and thoughts from from the other candidates as well. So, yeah, you know, I I love this community. I grew up here. I left a couple of times, but always make my way back. And and it's just, you know, when we moved back, we specifically chose, my husband and I specifically chose to put our kids in North Kansas City School District for a reason. And that's just because it is, it's diverse. You get the diversity. There's so many opportunities for the kids. And I just want to continue to be here to support that. I believe that public education is the cornerstone of the community that you live in. It really kind of defines defines everything around us. It's kind of the starting point. Everything grows from there. So, you know, my family's been in this area for, gosh, almost 75 years now. We've been going to North Kansas City schools since the beginning. And, you know, I just, I have a real sense of pride for, you know, these schools. I worked in in the Liberty School District, but still wanted my kids here. And I want to be here to help support and help move us forward in the future, to help be here to to help my knowledge and my, you know, just the the things that I know and the people that I know to help get us through some of these uncertain times as well. The board, I think, right now has been doing an amazing job. And I'm just, I'm excited to get in there and just continue on with the legacy of some of the board members that have been there for a long time that are moving on. I think some of the important things, just as I look forward, are continuing to promote academic excellence at the district, including workforce development. Let's continue to grow our community and keep our kids here. Fostering inclusivity, advocating for resources. We've got to get our teachers wanting to stay here and being able to recruit others. Mental health needs are also important to me and meeting those, as well as just encouraging innovation for the next generation. So thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Jessica?
Yeah, thank you again for the opportunity to be here and thank you to everybody who's watching tonight or in the future. I think one of the themes that I've seen tonight is a lot of consensus. We've agreed on plenty of issues here. So it makes it hard for voters to decide how they're going to draw a distinction between us on Election Day. I think one of the things you see on school board is it is very important that the school board speaks with one voice after a policy decision has been made. But as a parent and a community member, I've been extremely frustrated that what that often means in practice is that people who aren't in the meetings or on the email threads don't have visibility into the process where decisions are getting made. It's vitally important that you vote for a candidate who you believe will be a voice that you trust behind closed doors. As I've said, I think we're in a different educational landscape, especially for public education today. And I believe that a lot of parents and students are feeling afraid. If that describes you, you need to vote for a candidate who's not afraid to speak their mind or stand up for their values. I'm not in this race to compromise my values. And I expect that the job of a school board member will be harder than it's ever been for the next several years, and I'm ready for that challenge. So with that, I hope that you'll consider a vote for Jessica Rezak on April 8th.
Thank you very much. I have to talk to our timer because we had, the timer's been a little bit out of sync. And now we've lost her completely. Okay. I'm just gonna trust your sense of timing here. Dan?
All right.
I can pull up a timer on my phone.
Yeah, I'll do my best to hit the time. I just say enough. Again, thank you for the invitation. As many of us said, it's nice to see everybody and have conversations. As you all know, I made a choice to get into public education after a successful career in insurance. I've never looked back. I often tell people that I had the best job, the very best job, when I was principal of North Kansas City. And I feel like I can still get back to the district and follow that, that passion of public education, which is what I wanted to do with my life. I have four things I really looking forward to working on if I'm elected to the board. I think teacher recruitment and retention. Um, I think teacher recruitment and retention, critical, so critical because we're competing against not just districts in our area, but corporations and, and other, other organizations. Ensuring financial stability. Many of us talked about the landscape that's coming up and, and what's going to happen with the Department of Education. So I really want to make sure the district's had a good job of ensuring financial stability. I still want to make sure that's a focus. Um, fostering a culture of empowerment. Teacher empowerment to have autonomy for what they're doing in the classroom and supported by that and giving all the resources we possibly can so students reach their full potential, and I mean all students. And finally, looking at a continuous improvement model to make sure we're always looking at our programming. We're always looking at the resources to go to the programming and always taking a critical eye, um, as to, as to what we're doing for our kids and with our kids. So I think every vote's important and I think having a, a voice in this election, April eighth, is critical for, for public school districts like ours. And I'd appreciate your vote.
Thank you.
Was that good? Not even?
You had fifteen seconds. Do you want to say something else?
Uh, no, I'll pass that to the next person.
Cindy did text to say that she has lost power. We've had a lot of wind out here. I don't know if you're aware of that, but she's lost power. So, uh, Carolyn, you're up next.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity and I've really enjoyed the forum and getting to hear the other candidates. I've had the opportunity to meet most of them. Um, I, uh, like I said, um, the reason I wanted to run for school board is it's my time to give back. I have time now. As a retired person, I have time to look at or to read all the information, to research things, to, to visit Jefferson City and do all of those things. And, um, I've been so, I've, I, I can't imagine doing anything else except what I did as being a teacher. And even if it wasn't at school, I was doing Girl Scouts or teaching somebody to swim or whatever in the community. Um, and, um, like I said, I feel this is my time to give back and, um, I would appreciate your vote. Um, I'm a great listener and, uh, I believe that every single person within the, you know, like boundaries of our district deserves to be supported and deserves to have the best quality of education we can provide. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Jason, would you give us your closing statement, please?
I will. Um, first, I mean, it's been great to meet everybody. I hadn't met, met everybody that was running, uh, learned a lot from everybody. Here's, and I, I thought I would be able to say reasons on why people should vote for me over them and, you know, I, I can't. Everybody tonight has had something awesome to say and, uh, it's been great to meet all of you. And spoken with the Dan guy, he, he seems like an amazing person as well. So I think that no matter who you vote for, it's going to end up in everybody's favor. Current board is, is excellent. I'm not sure where the two that are, you know, stepping down or whatever are going, but, um, wish them the best of luck with that one. Um, I think the number one thing that I can advocate for again is those that don't really have a voice. Special needs, as well as a lot of the teachers. Shout out to Mrs. Easterday. She's one of the best teachers that, that I've ever, ever met. I mean, but all those teachers seem like they're overworked a little bit. The aspect of they need some, they need some extra help, uh, being at home and coming up with their class plan. So I'd like to see what I could do to bring it up and, uh, kind of advocate a little bit. Other than that, uh, we've already talked about it between the sports and the arts and this bond. I'd say that that's more important in this election. I'll probably get some bad black out of that one, but I really want to see that happen. I think that that's going to be awesome. Something for this whole district. So, being said, be out there and vote for somebody.
Well, thank you very much. And thanks to all of the candidates. Uh, this was an excellent forum. Thank you for participating. And I'm going to turn things back over to Anitra.
Thank you, audience, for your interest in the April sixth, April eighth election. A recording of this forum is available on the League's website, l w v k c dot org. Please take a minute to share our forums with your Facebook next door and other social media channels. And remember, for voting and candidate information, visit l w v k c dot org and vote for one one dot org. Thank you. Good night.